So that's ultimately why we started doing what we're doing.
Was it Chicago, somewhere? I can't remember.
Minor League Baseball with the Indians.
All right. My question.
Long time ago, long time ago.
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Okay, and particularly, the first question, I know you said you work within Arbor, right? And you also work with Spark. Are there any other communities within, I guess you could say, the eastern Washtenaw, Washtenaw County region that you are working with currently?
Currently? So we're doing the Economic Development Strategic Plan for the city of Dexter currently. And then this would be the second.
Okay.
Dexter has a finite period of time, start to finish, of when to start the plan and finish the plan and deliver it. This is a much longer engagement. I call this a program management engagement, and I have two other clients that I do program management for, city of Sterling Heights and Macomb County.
Okay.
And then the other projects typically sort of come up when they come up. So it's a marketing project, it's a research project, that sort of thing.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. I'm sure you know what a SWOT analysis is.
I do.
And so I'm trying to figure out basically where it is in your proposal that you're going to come up with our SWOT analysis, because in my opinion, the township needs one.
I just didn't want to say it.
Okay.
I didn't think everybody says SWOT analysis, and I just figured I'd sound like anybody else that would come up.
Right, I understand, I do, yeah.
It comes in that first three months.
Okay. All right, great. And retail, right, that's a specific focus for probably a lot of people I know, it's a specific focus for me. And particularly, we have, in my opinion, we have like a mixed retail, where on the north side of township, more of it is mom and pop, right? And then if you go towards Washtenaw, you have more, a little bit of mom and pop, but you do have some corporate big box, right? And then if you bring it over to the south side, there's a good mix of basically corporate with very small mom and pop. And one of my goals, I'll be honest, is to try and balance this out a little bit more, especially to the north side of township. And it's great to have some mom and pop, I think is vital, that people are able to open and be able to expand and also do their business. But in the same aspect, it also kind of unbalances some aspects, because there's, you know, there's other businesses that could provide jobs, whether that's medium, you know, medium market business, or either large market business, that may not be in an area that's totally focused or primarily focused on mom and pop. So how would you balance that out?
So I've done a lot of retail work the last three years, primarily for the city of Sterling Heights, because they have Lakeside Shopping Center that is going through a difficult time. And so we've done everything we could to get in front of anything that's going to change. Retail's a, I'll say it's kind of a goofy thing right now. Enclosed shopping centers, unless it's a really super high-end mall, everybody else is kind of struggling. Big-box retailers, depending on the market segment, have kind of struggled a little bit. And where a lot of the success has come, is actually from mom and pop type places that you can't necessarily find their stuff online, but you want to go to because it's, I know it's a mom and pop shop. So there's a lot of stuff going on in the marketplace right now, and it's really hard to pinpoint exactly what's going to happen next. I mean, there's been a lot of store closures, right? There's MC Sporting Goods, Sports Authority, JCPenney, Sears, Lord &amp; Taylor, Macy's are closing all over the place. That's all having an impact on the local retail landscape. So part of it is, how do you manage for anything that's going to change, right? And that's, sometimes those are zoning issues. So you may have a big-box store with a lot of parking, what's the likelihood of another 45,000 square foot retailer to go into that space? We don't know. Right now, it's probably more difficult than it has been. We also want to kind of look at what's missing. You know, what are the opportunities and where can they go? That's kind of a big key in terms of, okay, who do we need to talk to? And a lot of times, okay, who are the brokers that represent those companies that we need to start talking to? On the local side, generally, on the mom and pop side, in my opinion, generally what you see is when economies are doing really well, that more people are off to go on their own and start something. And so that's kind of the stage that we're in right now. In terms of trying to find a balance for both of those, a lot of those are dictated by the economy. And for us, it's important to make sure that we know what we're dealing with, that we know, have as much information as we possibly can, to then figure out, okay, what's the best way to go? That's all I can tell you.
Okay.
Is information is going to be key. Talking to local retailers, talking to local retail developers, looking at the demographics, looking at the trends to figure out, okay, maybe we should start thinking about this, which is what we did in Sterling Heights. It was a year before the mall owner defaulted on their mortgage payment, where we said, I don't think things are going to go well for the mall, and here's why. And we did a number of white papers, we did a lot of studies for the city, and they finally said, you know what, you're right, we got to just start thinking about this differently. And then come a year later, the owner defaulted on their mortgage payment, it's being serviced by somebody else, and just recently, within the last two months, the servicer took the note in lieu of default from the owner. So now you have somebody who's not a mall owner, that owns a pretty big shopping mall in a pretty big city. So we're still kind of working through all that stuff. So it's information first, and then kind of putting the process together afterwards.
One more question. How do you balance inside of your economic development plan, overgrowth, right? Because I'll be honest, there are some communities that they have grown, and to the point that they're overgrown, especially on certain corridors, I'm pretty sure maybe you know what I'm maybe speaking of. For instance, Canton, Fort Rowe, overgrown in my opinion, there's too much there almost. So do you include those type of, I guess you could say, analysis inside of your economic development strategy, to make sure that it does, you know, the growth or future growth or planned growth maintains a balance?
I think so. And actually, we use a data company called Emzie out of Moscow, Idaho. The principal of their consulting group used to work for the Center of Automotive Research. That's how we got connected with them. But we just had the conversation this morning about the other strategic plan that we're doing. When you look at the trends of the community, and you look at the industry that's growing, the housing that's growing, but the thing that's there that would prevent it from growing any further is infrastructure. It's a major issue. So that's a decision then, somebody has to make at some point. We've grown, and we project to grow, naturally. But if we want to grow anymore, we got to make a major investment in infrastructure, or we got to do stuff different, which is going to cost us. It's either going to cost us quality of life, it's going to put pressure on our infrastructure, it's going to put pressure on our staff, maybe our residents don't want that anymore. So our decision today is, do you want to make that investment and see if you keep growing? Or is where we're headed good enough? And then you have to sort of create your internal policies to say, this is how we're going to manage this going forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, I'm glad you're here, Luke. Thanks for the presentation. I think we've been asking this question for many years, is like, why does it get to Canton, Virginia, Michigan, and it stops? And what were your, you know, in terms of development and bringing some of those businesses down, and what is our problem? I'm not expecting you to be able to answer that question, but what would you do to figure out, you know?
Jumps.
Where, how do we get some of that, some of that good quality development, retail? I think there's some businesses, industrial, how do we get that down, and we, junkyards and salvage and all related.
Well, I think the first thing you have to figure out, there's people that have invested here, and have been successful, right? So why have they done it, and what's been successful about it? And then you have to sort of take that and start, I'll call it marketing it, but communicating that, and finding out the right fits, and communicating that to people that you think would be successful. You know, from my perspective, kind of coming out, and I've had private clients, and we've been looking for stuff, I mean, you're between 23 and 275, you've got great freeway access, you've got actual visibility from the freeway, which is what everybody wants, you're easy in, easy out. So to me, those are all things that say, I agree with you, why hasn't more things happened? I think one of the things, like I mentioned, the first thing I like to do is figure out what the property situation looks like, and how it's being marketed, both on the private side, that's private property being listed by brokers, how is that being marketed, and the public land that you own. So completely delineating the property boundaries, wetland issues, infrastructure, understanding all of that, and making sure that we're communicating at least the right opportunities. But you know, if you're looking at classic case study of, you know, a community that's next to a research university, has freeway frontage, freeway access, has another university right down the road from it, has a great hotel, great golf course, residential development, what's missing? So I think that's sort of what we're going to try to help with. Is that helpful?
Yeah, it does. I just have a little follow-up.
If I give you the answer today, then you won't hire me.
Yeah, right. My other question, the other question is kind of, what's kind of ties it in, like that's one problem issue there. On the south side, well, I think overall, when we've looked at the census and stuff, we have a large population which has a huge amount of discretionary income, that they're taken down 94 to Canton, 94 to Ann Arbor, and like, how would we figure out like what it is, what it is to take? And I know, I guess it's twofold. So one is, how do we keep that money here? What would we, what do we need to do in order to do that? And two, kind of on the same track, but a little bit different, is, we know that Kroger's is here, and the hotels, and the hotels have kind of figured it out, which is their market is different. But one of the things we know that we run into all the time is that companies are telling us that when they do our demographic, or they're like, they go a three-mile radius or 10-mile radius, we get plopped down, and we pick up unfortunately, a lot of properties in the city that bring down our discretionary income and stuff, and they say, no, we're not coming. We know, and we had a really hard time, but we finally got to the right bodies, people that make the decisions at Kroger's. We yelled about Kroger's for probably 10 years. Those of us lived out here, were either going all the way to Belleville, or all the way to Myers on Pittsfield, that was it, or Gought Village, which was kind of going down, down anyways. But how do we get other folks, whether it's, you know, different kinds of commercial properties? I know that this is the place to be, and how do you get them to come here? So it's like, Michigan A was one thing you said, but is there a different strategy? Just outside of town?
That's all information that we have to just understand better. That's from demographic information, so knowing what the decision-makers know. There's a story to the community that only you guys can tell. A lot of those are really good anecdotes, but anecdotes don't build new buildings. So how do we take data, your anecdotes, and what you know, how do we put them together? What has been successful, and how do we communicate that to people that are doing projects? What is the issue? What's the holdup? If there is one, can we fix it?
Could it be because we've never recruited? Like, we've never actively gone to recruit? They've always come to us?
I think, I think it could be a combination of both. I mean, ultimately, when somebody's going in to make an investment, they have a lot of information at their fingertips. And a lot of stuff today, people don't get in their cars and drive around as much as they used to. They're usually pulling data from online resources or private databases, and they're talking to people more, and determining, okay, if we're going to go do something in Washtenaw, what are the three places that we really want to look at? Or where's the major growth coming from? Where are we going to put the next Kroger's at? What makes the most sense? So a lot of that stuff people have. So we need to understand what they have first. So we need to know what they know. That's the best way I can put it.
Well, they don't have all our stuff, is what you're saying?
They may not.
Well, I know they don't, because I just got an email asking for properties.
Right.
You know what, 60 to 200 acres, identify NHTC Township, so.
You'll be busy doing that the next few days, weeks.
I got it, I got it. No, I got it. But it did take us a few hours to get it, whereas most people can just snap their fingers and get it.
My last question is, those of us who have lived here an entire life, and, you know, had the great opportunity to be blessed to live on different sides of the community and stuff, we know about all the great places to go, right? And even though Ipsy Real's advertising our chicken, and they're advertising our bills, and our Gabriel's, which are icons, you know, and people come from Southfield and Deer Forest, they end up getting on that mart, you know, on that advertisement that Ipsy Real's doing, to spread the word about Michigan restaurants and the best places to go with authentic and stuff. We have so many residents here, or like, the latest one was, I think Heather and I were talking about trustee Joe Rowe, or somebody was talking about, because we know that we all go to Ice Cream Town. And that's like the hottest place to go, but that's on the north side, but everybody that's on this side, they go, like, why would you go to Culver's when you can go in Van Buren? But they don't know. We ran into somebody that we know really well, has lived over here for 28 years, and did not know that that existed. So we know that we have a lot of great businesses and stuff on both sides of town. I think people on the north side know about everything over there.
Yeah.
But how do we get all the new transants moving in, who are becoming our new growth, our new population? How do we get them to know about all the great, really homegrown, wonderful places to eat and shop, and take your dog for grooming, or, you know?
Well, don't forget, you've got, you've got a big township, right? So, and I just, I can only tell you this from my own experience, of the different places that we've lived, where we've lived in big communities landwise, that sometimes people just kind of get stuck in their own, this is my circumference, right? I know there's something over there, but it's like, oh, it's going to take me seven minutes to drive there. I mean, people develop their own personal habits based on, you know, how convenient things are for them.
Yeah, but the reality is, and that's the thing, that's, I think that's our block, with the town, with the lake and the expressway, they don't realize, you could be anywhere in our township in 10 minutes, pretty much. But yet, they'll drive 20 minutes to Canton, or who, God knows, 30 minutes still with Ann Arbor in the traffic, when we have that all right here, and so.
They don't know.
They don't know.
And I'll give you an example too, it's a personal example again. I live closer to downtown Celine. So when we go do stuff, it's like that way, because the kids go to school there, all their activities are there, that's where we go. If we were to ever go to Ann Arbor, for example, that's like, that's a night out, that we would do like once every two months. Whereas some people, once they live closer, they go to downtown Ann Arbor more versus why would I go to downtown Celine? Right? So it's, there are patterns of, traffic patterns, commuter patterns, those are all things that we have a database that we can look at. You can see where people are sort of traveling, what the drive times are for people to go shopping. Those are all things that we'll be able to see, that'll paint a really nice picture of, oh, okay, well, that makes sense. You know, for example, we worked with a group out of Dallas, Texas, to do a very in-depth retail study for a client. And, you know, it was based on what the population of people lived in the community, and it was very delineated. You know, it was a huge, you know, community, former township, six miles by 36 square miles, and the community was very delineated, versus, you know, the younger population lived here, you know, younger families lived here, the older population lived here, and it's like, wow, it's almost like block by block by block, there's a segregation of age groups in the community, which totally then makes you realize why things are the way they are. That's why this retail center has this down here, and this retail center has this up here, because they're betting on the people that live within three miles of that retail center, and now that we've looked at the population data, it made sense. So again, we need to sort of uncover all those things, so that we understand what the decision-makers are looking at.
Thank you.
Stan?
Not a question, Luke, more of a request. I see where you're going to manage inquiries. I guess that's from prospective businesses. Four of us aren't here a whole lot, I know you'll be in touch with the full-timers. Is there a mechanism that you can just keep us up to date on those contacts, so that we don't get surprised, like maybe one of our neighboring communities gets surprised?
Well, we can do reports either monthly or weekly, or every couple of weeks.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, it doesn't have to necessarily be real-time, but it's always nicer if we hear it from you who's doing it, rather than somebody on the street or.
Sure.
Somebody else. Because we get asked a lot of questions out in the community, so. That would be my only question. The other one would be, I don't see this on the agenda tonight.
I didn't know if you wanted it on there.
I would make a motion that we add it tonight, so we can get started.
Okay.
Luke, at the last meeting, I just, I knew you, but I just wanted to make sure we did our due diligence and checked around, and I've talked to people I know down in Southfield quite a bit, I didn't talk to Shelby, but, so.
Okay.
It was never a question of going with one or the other, just doing the due diligence. But I would make a motion, we put it on, if there's no objection for tonight, so we can vote and get started.
So there's a, we don't vote here to.
Right.
I concur with that.
Everyone's inconcurrent, so we can move it to other business. Okay. Is that all right with everyone?
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have one more question.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
I only have one more question.
You can go ahead.
Let's have Jimmy go.
And it's really, it goes back to that whole like marketing and website thing, and I think that just when Clerk Rowe was talking about the Ipsy Real thing and how they market stuff, I feel like a really big weakness that would definitely fall in our W's for our SWOT analysis, is our township's just marketing and website? Like, I don't think personally it's user-friendly. I go on my phone all the time, and I'm like, I can't find anything. So if you don't do that for us, then how would developers come and like connect with us? How do you do that if your website isn't interactive, and if your service wouldn't do that? How do we overcome that?
Well, right now, it's, I think it's more about being proactive. The good thing about Bonner Advisory Group is we've been around for a long time, and it's really easy for us to pick up the phone and call people that we already know have done business here, or doing business in other communities. That's really simple for us. Now, you're talking about total township website, and then you've got economic development, which ultimately is a part of the total, so.
And we can just talk about the economic development.
So again, it's connections and relationships. A lot of the times, if you see the real estate part of what we do, the financial incentive part of what we do, the business development strategy part of what we do, it's because of relationships. So right now, you'll get into the first couple of months until you determine, okay, how do we want to spend our marketing dollars if we want to spend on anything? You're going to have me calling a whole lot of people, that I think frankly would be very difficult to just hire anybody else that can just start picking up the phone and calling folks. So that's, that's the other benefit of working with our company.
Okay, Jimmy.
Hey, Luke. A lot of the questions I had, you actually broke down very well in your presentation, so thanks for coming by and breaking that down for us.
Welcome.
And the only question I had was, so this contract is for potentially one year. Other municipalities you have worked with, what happened after the contract was over? Did they need more help? What do you see, foresee? Would this potentially be something that you would come back and need, you know, one more time, or, I guess obviously we could also request, you know, longer after one year, or?
Sure. So Sterling Heights and Macomb County, I've had going into my fourth year, next year will be my fourth year, so those are constant renewal clients. And that was, that was a process much like this one. The Aerotropolis was a one-year, well, it was a six-month contract originally, then we extended another six months. And the idea there though was at some point, they needed to hire a full-time person. You know, Sterling Heights has, I feel like they've been reaping the benefits of being able to outsource economic development, and we do provide still full-service economic development like we would here. The other clients, the projects are, you know, it's a strategic planning project, it's a one-time real estate feasibility project. I think for the term of this contract, I think we just see how things go from the township perspective, and when we get to start, get to the end of the first year, then you determine, wow, you know, we probably need to have a 50-hour-a-week person on staff every single day, all day long, doing this for us, 40, 40 hours, 45 hours, whatever it is. Or, which I'd like to think that we'll be able to provide enough value as an option to continue to outsource it. It really depends on how things turn out. What do we discover? What are we working on? What are we in the middle of when things are getting going?
Thank you.
Is that helpful?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Yes, trust you. One more question. In your economic development strategy, right, image, right, is important, and basically how it is that people from outside the township view Ipsilanti Township. So specifically, my question goes around, how do you, in this strategy, I guess you could say, craft an image for Ipsilanti Township? I think that's another area I think is important. A lot of times, people project an image into Ipsilanti Township that is not even nowhere near what this township is really of, the residents, our businesses, and that has to change. That is critically important in order to get business, and also for future economic development. So is that something that you do inside of your economic development strategy?
We need to ask the question, as part of, I'll call it our due diligence. It's part of the information gathering, it's part of the conversations, it's part of the survey work, very specific question about image and branding, we need to know all of those things, so when we're bringing everybody together, it's one of the issues we put on the table, if that's what's important to everybody.
I've got one question. Luke, when I, when I went through this, I didn't see any termination clause, so if you decided you don't like working with us, or we for some reason was unhappy, is there a termination? Did I miss it, or was there?
No, so the next step is to provide a contract. So the contract will have all of that detailed information. Generally speaking, it's 30 days. You know, if you don't like what you get, and you tell me, you know, November 1st, and I'm done, December 1st. But that's generally how it does, how it works. And then when the contract is over with, we can just put in there that you can take it back to the board, the terms of the contract stay the same, and you renew it for the next year.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Luke.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. Well, thanks.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
All right. We're going to do the 2018 preliminary budget.
Is this the same as what, is this the same as what we had in the packet?
Uh-huh.
It did never change.
They just made it. Kimmy made hard copies. Yeah. The org?
The switch?
The org?
Make them.
Yeah. Where'd it go?
Oh, I was going to print it out for sure.
Okay. Nope. It left. Okay, we're out. Ready, Rosie?
It's blinking on and off, so. Hi, I'm Javanna Neal, the accounting director, and I'd like to go over some of our funds, the budgets for those, tonight. On the screen, I have the website where you can get the budgets off of our website. I do have copies for all the trustees and the elected officials, full times of my presentation. We also have the line-by-line narrative and amounts of the budget. So at any point, as I'm going through the funds, if you have any questions on any of the line-by-line, please let me know. What I'm going to go over is more of a classification of those items, so it's a summary type of a budget. So I will not be going line-by-line, but if you do have questions on any of the funds, please let me know, and we'll see if we can address those right now. There was a question last week, and this is not, I don't think this is in your packet, this is just a follow-up question that we had last week, about what makes up the exemption properties that I had on my presentation. And Linda Goslin was kind enough to put those together for me, so those are what the exemption properties are, the township properties, county, state, federal, DNR, public schools, colleges, religious properties, and nonprofit education and habitat pre-managed. So that made up that 500, I think it was 555. So that made up that 500, I think it was 555 of the exempted properties. So I just wanted to get that out there. So if there's no, if there's a question that I can't answer, I'll make sure I bring it back to you the following presentation. The first one I'd like to go over is our BSR 2 fund, which is the bike, sorry, the bike path sidewalk and recreation fund. Right. And as I stated before, on my presentation, we're going over classifications. So these are just kind of pooled into each category. You'll see I have them range from what revenues come in highest is your top line and then down based on how much we actually, revenue we bring in. So the property taxes, I have the millage up there, it's .9966. And I did go over how we come up with all of our revenue, budgeted revenues last meeting. So does anybody have any question on the revenues for BSR 2? Okay. All right, this slide here or the next one? So this is kind of, okay. So I did want to say that there is a revenue coming into this from the general fund. It is for the debt services, for the bonds, the road bonds. So the general fund does pay half of that. Our next slide is our expenditures. Oh, you know what? It's one-off because of the question I had. Yes, sorry. Yes, so they're one-off. So the expenditures on here, so the biggest expenditure coming out of the BSR 2 fund is the transfers out that we have for the golf course and the recreation. They do not make enough to sustain their fund, so we do have to help them out. The next one is our debt obligation. Yes, sir?
Will we be discussing those two funds next meeting? Those two areas, departments?
I don't know which ones I'm going to bring forward. I don't know if I'll bring them at the same time because we have the general fund to go through and that's the bigger one. So I gotta try to fit what I can. And if we don't have a special meeting, I have to do all the rest of them at the end of November. So probably, probably have them all at one time.
The only reason I ask, it's almost $700,000.
Yes.
So I think we need to discuss those.
Yeah, and we will when we come into each, each one of the funds.
So if, if those two budgets.
If those two budgets are changed at all, as far as amount, then that would change the F and R 2.
Right.
What is the difference? What is this, what goes to which one? How much? Just round it out.
Have it on the next slide.
Oh, thank you. Oh, yeah, you're right. I did look at it. I'm sorry.
So the next slide has exactly what amounts that we need to pull over on those. I did want to say too, on the line-by-line budget with the narratives on there, you were given copies, there are some highlighted narratives. Those are changes that we did make, so I did want to notate that. And I also wanted to say thank you to Tammy Keen and Brenda Stumbo and all the directors who helped put this together. I think it's well put together. I think every line has an explanation. If we need to explain it more, then please let us know and we'll go over those.
I did have it. Trust you, Monica.
Thank you. I had a question in regards to the parks repair and maintenance. Particularly if I'm looking at 2016, it's like 57, almost 58,000, which was over the budget but is probably needed. And then the requested budget for 2018 is 40,000. I have a big question if that's enough. We have, you know, varying issues within our parks that need to have maintenance and also updates is a good way to say it. And so when I saw that, it kind of, it came, you know, eye to eye in regards to is that enough even for a budget for the maintenance issues that exist in our parks?
Right. And it may not be. We may need to come through with a budget amendment as things are needed. I know this year we tried to repair some of the railings and walkways down at North Bay and some of the equipment at some of the other, and they do come up. So, you know, it's just an estimated amount.
Okay.
And then they do have to bring back projects to you for your authorization if it's over 7,500. So, you know, you'll see all of those as they come up. And if they're needed, then we always come back with a budget amendment.
And I think there is, what kind of, there's a $84,000 amount available that could be used for more projects in fund balance if we needed it.
Yes.
But until we get what we need, historically, we have always, like complete replacements is different than repairing. So when we do a complete replacement, that's a capital improvement that we bring to the board to, for whatever parks we decide to do. This is just for like maintenance and repair of them, not complete replacement. And we actually have received some quotes on the slides to replace slides in the parks that were identified. But, you know, medical, it was put in 20 years ago, most of the playground equipment. So the park commission will prioritize which one they want to do. I agree they're needing, we could literally replace every one of them. And we might want to do that.
Clark Rowe? I'm sorry, I had to stop out for a second. But on the fund balance transfer in, that was on the one for the 126,000, and I saw on a capital line, what, like what is it for?
What page are you on?
Page three. It was for '17. Then I also saw the same exact amount was on it. It was for '17, but then it was on the capital outlay. Do you know what that was for? Because asterisk, I didn't know what the asterisk is.
The asterisk is a budget amendment. So we had a budget amendment for that amount for a project that we had. So that'll correlate with an expenditure.
Gotcha.
For 2017.
Okay, thank you.
Can I actually have that written down as well? It would be on your page six, I believe. Yes. So the projects that we brought forward, the big projects were the roofing at the community center and the sidewalk repairs that were done. And we did bring those forward for a budget amendment and approval.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just, I don't, I think I'm going back one slide. I'm sorry, Javonna, I'm skipping back. I'm just reading the last bullet point and it's on our page six, so here's slide seven.
Okay.
And it says that no other capital outlay projects were budgeted for 2018. But I'm just trying to recall the last time I was at a park commission meeting and they had all of these things that really should be, like you were saying, capital improvements because there are, some of our structures are so old and outdated. So have they not made any recommendations or had any discussion about like what we should be fixing in our parks?
And which ones first and?
Yeah. Because like, I mean, obviously I have a kid, which is two, we go to parks all the time and like today I went to a park and I just think that we could do better. Our township is better than what our parks look like currently at current state.
And that's why it says they will come back to the board.
Yeah, I'm just, I guess wondering on a side note, like we need to maybe encourage them to.
Right. And we need a cost estimate. You know what I mean? It's a process to.
Yeah, it's a process.
And we didn't replace all of them at one time? So you have to decide which ones.
Was priority.
Right. And that's, we, and I think Ford Lake is the top priority. And I think everyone agrees, but you have to get, and if the park commission can't come to that conclusion, I think we could bring it forward without doing that. But I tried to.
Right, not overs.
Respect it. The process.
Sorry, that's my last part.
Madam Chair, would you comment just on that? They should be able to go in the master plan. And there was a prioritization that was done inside that master plan A, B, and C in regards to different projects throughout the township parks that needed to be addressed. So I don't know, maybe that's a suggestion for them, but maybe they need to look at.
Well, the master plan is up, it's for next year to be redone. So they're actually doing a master plan update as well.
Okay.
So they'll upgrade those.
Yeah.
You know how they prioritize what, yeah, y'all did it. And a walkability, you know, plan needs to be updated as well.
So none of the other things from the previous master plan for the parks were actually implemented?
Yeah, they were.
They were.
Yeah. Button Blossom was done, I mean, that was just done, they, that's one I remember more than anyone. And we did that with CBD dollars.
And I know they're really happy about that.
Yeah.
Well, I know, like, I think everybody agrees for like park needs to be done. I think the park commission, maybe you could just say, can you like decide what you want to put in there? We could get rid of it and give us a number. And I also know we brought forward those huge cracks that were in those ones that burns and club view and I didn't know, are we doing those now? Are we pricing them?
They're getting.
We're going out.
They're getting.
Working on it. Because that's going to be expensive.
Jeff's been out for a while, but Carl Gerbach had started and received a couple quotes right to repair them. So we have, you know, we have to go through a process to do that. But yeah.
Just a point of information, yeah, Button Blossom, that was, I'm inside the master plan. I think there was also tennis courts that were done over at Ford Lake Park. Two basketball research, basketball court resurfacing at Apple Ridge and then also at West Willow Park. And I believe even the racquetball court was repainted, if I have it correct, and that was at Ford Lake. So and some things in the master plan was actually moved forward. Those are the ones I just know right off the top of my head, yeah.
And we can get that. Oh, it's on the website supposedly.
I can't find it.
All right. The last page for our BSR 2 fund was the budgeted fund balance. So this kind of tells you where we're at in 2016. That's the first column. That is actually in our financial statements. You can see our net revenues and expenses. We were, had to go into our fund balance by $40,367 last year. And you can see the beginning fund balance, subtract the net of that 40,000. So ending in 2016, we had a fund balance of $324,349. All right. So on our next column is our original budget. So you would take the ending balance and put it up in the beginning fund balance. We have projected in 2017 that we'll end up with a net of revenues and expenditures of a positive 87,000. So we still have some funds available. And you can see in the budget amendment that we put forward up through September, we had asked for a budget amendment of the 1,000, or 126,799. So we've actually used some of that 87,000 that we had available. So do follow me on those numbers. And then for '18, and this is projected, for '18, we have to use the ending fund balance from the budget amendment. That's the 285,485. That would be our beginning fund balance for 2018. And then we say with our budget, the way we have it now, that we are going to have excess of the 84,188, which leaves us with the $369,673, which is the 24%. And we like to see that funded anywhere between 15 and 18%. So we have funds available to do some projects. So that's kind of how that page works, as you can kind of see where we're at. So that concludes the BSR 2 fund. Does anybody have any other questions on that one before we move on? Okay. I have Mike Razik here with me today and we're going to be going over most of his budgets. So if you have questions, helping me out with these on an individual basis. So we're going to do our housing and business inspection fund. It's our fund 248. And again, this is by classification. The presentation is by classification. You have the line-by-line amounts with the narratives. So if you have any questions, please let me know. But by classification, we have the revenues for service charges, which is your vacant property and rental inspections combined together. That makes up 73% of the revenues that we have for this fund. Does anybody have any specific questions on the revenues for housing inspections?
Is the multiple in here too?
I'm sorry.
Is this the multiples in here?
Yes.
320. 320.
The expenditures for the housing and business inspection fund. You can see our personnel services, which are all the wages and fringes, I'm sorry, just the wages for the individuals is at 60%, 60.5%. And then the fringes come in second at 24.9. We have admin fees, leases to the motor pool. So is there any questions on the expenditures? And again, each, each of the line items have a narrative with them.
I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I did have a question. I think it was basically, and I just didn't, I know it was at a negative, I just didn't know why. And it was line item 248, 248000, 179003. It was saying the employee paid health contra and it added a negative.
Yes. That's a good question.
Okay.
Okay. So that is a contra account. And that's set up to be a negative because that is the employees' portion that they give in out of, out of their wages. They contribute to their healthcare.
Okay, thank you.
So that offsets the healthcare.
All right, thank you.
So we're full staff now, right, on the whole rental side? We're not full staff. Because I know we hired the folks to do the rental quite some time ago and I just, we're just, we're starting, right? Have we started yet?
We have, as you all know. We were very late getting started with the multifamily portion of this. We ended up after our building official left us at the end of July. We've since engaged with a private consultant who has spent a considerable amount of, considerable amount of time working with our staff. We have already begun. We've conducted an inventory of the conditions of all 67 apartment complexes. We've identified Greenbrier on South Congress Street as the top priority. We've completed the exterior inspections. We've actually posted placard warnings not to use numerous second-floor balconies because they're detaching from the wall. And the actual inspection of the 40-some units is scheduled to occur within the next few weeks. The rest of the complexes are in the process of being scheduled for inspection and I think we've got all but just a couple registered now. So we are now very proactive. The revenue for 2017 that was budgeted for the multifamily has not yet been realized, but it is beginning to come in now. And I think for 2018, the same, we budgeted the same amount because 2018 will, for all practical purposes, be the in-earnest launch year for that program. We're also in terms of staffing. There's three ordinance assistants that are budgeted in this staff and one of those positions is currently vacant after Kevin Folkert left us a month or two ago. And that position was approved by the board to be posted and HR is diligently working to help us fill that position. So staffing-wise, we're down one out of this budget right now.
And their ordinance and rental.
Their ordinance enforcement assistance, their primary duty is housing inspections and vacant building inspections. They also contribute towards general code enforcement as needed.
So just for point of information, so when we hired them, they weren't doing rental. So what have they been, what were they? So what have they been, what were they doing?
Are you referring to the Act Fifty-four?
The ones that you hired, that we hired to do the rental?
Yep. Um, well, they're doing plumbing and electrical inspections, which is their Act Fifty-four certification.
Like for just building permits that people are pulling?
Correct. Um, there were three we hired, a plumbing and electrical and a second building inspector. So there, the building inspector is actually quite busy. The other two, um...
I'm, I'm sorry, Mike, is that mostly on new construction, man?
New construction and renovations.
Renovation, yeah, okay. Not on, they haven't been doing rental until more recently.
They have been contributing towards rental inspections for single-family properties as, as they have time available. There are also, two of them have gone through the training classes through the state for soil erosion and sedimentation control. We run our own or issue our own SESC permits for soil erosion control, um, and that requires special state certification. Dave Bellers was the only one since then. Mike Cromer and Pete Power and Bill Bombs have all completed the state, um, training to be inspectors, and Pete Power has also taken the testing to be a plan reviewer as well. We are anticipating Mr. Bellers to go off on another long-term medical around the end of the year, beginning of next year. And so we're trying to prepare by training people to take up some of the duties that he would ordinarily perform.
So how, if, like, if they're so busy, like, they were so busy in the new stuff, or people pulling permits for renovations, because the rental's going to be huge, are we going, and I heard you say you're down one, so are, are we going to need more people, or?
I don't expect having to come back and ask for any more help at this point. I think we'll, with our existing both ordinance, housing and building staff, we should be able to handle everything that we have coming.
Then I had an actual question on page eleven. I didn't understand. It said the fund reflects on seven oh-six oh-one-four. Is this a payback that's going to be paid back? You spent money out of the building fund?
So, so for the building fund, all the...
That's Two Forty-eight, right?
That's, that's Two Forty-nine, and all the inspectors have to have a certain classification under Act Fifty-four. And only the funds that they pull in for that specific inspection can be used with that fund. So if they go out on a rental, we have to know that, and we put their, we separate their wage and put it in here.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just trying to figure out, so twenty thousand dollars was spent, or twenty-one thousand, you're budgeting to pay back?
Yes.
Because you use them on rental and you owe the building fund for, you charge their wages to the building fund?
Exactly.
That's all I was just trying to figure out.
Yes.
Thank you.
All of these revenue projections are based on the number of single-family rental properties remaining neutral from this year to next. There's about two thousand, uh, six hundred there in the system right now. We don't expect any dramatic increase or decrease. It had dropped from three thousand down to where it's at now over the last couple of years, but it has stabilized. It's also based on sixty-seven apartment complexes with about seven thousand, two hundred apartment units, and then another eight to nine hundred rented mobile home units that we'll also be looking at.
Giovanna, I had a question. The fund balance percent of revenue is twenty-eight percent for 2018 requested budget. Where, uh, what would be the recommended, uh, level that you'd like to see that at?
I would like to see that between fifteen and eighteen.
What page is that, Jimmy?
Twelve.
Twelve. But on the building side, though, it's kind of different than the rest of funds, because that's, this fund's got to get you through the bad times, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so the fund balance there, you don't want it really to be low unless you never...
I just, I don't want it to be any lower than, than, than fifteen ever, but, you know, like you said, it depends as times...
And the reason we were able to get through the hard, the terrible, terrible times is because we built up monies in this fund during the good times, and that's okay legally to just to keep it going, right?
No, that's Two Forty-nine.
Two Forty-eight is also completely self-sustaining with permit fee revenue, no general fund contribution, so it's more critical, I think, for Two Forty-nine, the building fund, but the same principle applies here as well.
It's supposed to be self-sustaining.
Exactly.
But Two, Two Forty-nine, which is the actual Act Fifty-four, legal one, okay.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, if there's no questions on the fund balance, the budgeted fund balance, we'll move on to the building inspection fund. That's Fund Two Forty-nine. This is the legal one. This is all under Public Act Fifty-four. So the revenues, you can see the biggest revenue is the licensing and permits that The expenditures are your personnel.
She has a question.
Yeah, so how, why do we have to bring in all that money in on the fund, fund balance?
We added...
At a time when things were rolling.
In 2017?
Yeah.
Because we added, we added the three...
We restored positions.
We restored positions, yes.
Is this the one that's going to, you're going to get the monies back in here that was, that you charged? Because, because those people were working...
Only if they do some rental stuff, which they didn't really do a whole lot at the beginning of seventeen. They're doing some now, so you're not going to see what we had for the rentals, because they can't do rental, we can't pay them for rentals out of a Two Forty-nine, because that's, it's a Public Act Fifty-four requirements that they do only the, the building permits.
What I don't understand is normally you get, because they're doing permits, so you're getting monies, and there's normally enough. Was it like, it's, was there a slow period, or?
We restored prepositions that were not in their original budget.
Yes, so they have plenty of fund balance.
You were contracting out for before?
So it, it hit all the other line items?
Yes, and so, and part of that is, is the vehicles that we had to purchase. So they purchased those, but those are leased out of the motor pool, but they have to pay that back. So there was, there was a lot of fees that went with that. You know, when you're contracting, you didn't have any legacy or any fringe benefits, so we had the fringe benefits, the wages, you know, it, it added on to workers' comp. It, it hit everything to add on, so that's where we hit that in 2017 when we added those.
This is one of those budgets that, unlike other budgets that are supported by property tax revenue, it's very difficult to project what your revenue is going to be from year to year based on the value of the properties that you're taxing. This is supported solely by permit fees, which is driven by new construction renovations. For example, we did a, what I thought was a fairly conservative revenue estimate for this year. As of yesterday, we had, we've hit one hundred percent of our projected revenue for the entire year yesterday, and so there'll be revenue in excess of what we projected. The fund balance, as Madam Clerk referenced, I would not feel comfortable letting it go down anywhere near fifteen percent strictly because it fluctuates. There were, during the good times, it, it builds up during the bad times to continue to provide those services. You can draw it down. And we've got some special projects that may be coming to the board with a request to dip into fund balance next year. We've got an entire section up near HR that has, you've probably seen it, those tremendous huge files that hold all the old paper records for the, all the properties in the township prior to nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand, I believe. I would like to get those digitized. We spend a lot of human staff time fishing for them, to find them, first of all, because there's a lot of it's misfiled, and then secondly, once we find them, we have, we scan them into BSNA. We could eliminate all that staff time if we paid an outside firm to come in and digitize all those and make those available for an electronic search, just like we do in BSNA. So that would be an appropriate use of the fund balance perhaps for next year. We're also continuing to contract out our mechanical inspection services, and there may come a time soon when we might want to consider hiring a mechanical inspector. I don't think we're quite there yet, but the time may come soon. And then we would truly be fully staffed in the building department.
Well, then, it definitely would be appropriate use, too, if we were to re-resurrect our workflow software that we want, and it seems like that would be really...
As it affects and impacts the building department, functions, it, it probably would be, yes.
Maybe we can include that before...
Yep. We've also contracted with BSNA for specialized training for our staff, and after working with the consultant on our multifamily, we've learned that BSNA is capable of so much more, and we're going to have to spend some money to train our staff on how to use it properly. So that could potentially also come out of fund balance.
Okay, and I have the classifications for the expenditures. Again, personnel is, is the highest expenditure, followed by fringe benefits. This is the budgeted fund balance page, and you can see that it is high, but as Mike Razik has explained, there's lows that go, we just don't know what they are. So this one, this one is one that I do like to see a lot of fund balance in here, just because we, we never know with our economy what we'll need, and you don't really have to reduce your staff, you know, you find other things for them to do.
There are, there are revenue anomalies with the building fund. For instance, when ACM recently submitted three building permit requests, um, one permit fee, I think, was like thirty-five thousand dollars, just for one building. That's an anomaly. You don't see that every day. The bulk of it is the small projects, people putting up sheds and adding on to their home and renovating homes, and landlords improving rental properties, so on and so forth. Those small-ticket permits is really what we rely on, so we never, we always try to remember not to count on those big-ticket things that only come around once in a while.
So do we have any other questions on our building fund? I'm going to skip over this one and get, go right into, um, we'll come back to the hydro fund. Since I've got Mike up here, we'll go ahead and do his law enforcement.
Good question. So when you added the extra people, you know, this year to that fund, so, so did you, you recalculate, or you just wait till the end of the year to do the administration, the fee that you charged for all the overall general, based on how many employees and all that?
I wait till the end of the year.
So we don't really recoup whatever?
No. I didn't want, you know what? That does remind me, I'm glad you did say that. This is going to be, um, I'll go back to, this will be the first year in 2018 that we are going to actually pull funds in for the retirement.
OPEB.
OPEB. Yes. Yes, so we, we had not charged them OPEB before. They were not actually making enough for us to pull extra out, so we are, it's general fund always paid for them. So this year, with their healthy fund balance, we thought that they could now pay their portion of that OPEB expenditure.
Frankly, we probably should go back, I mean, let's say this, we probably should research that, because we probably should not have been paying that all along out of building permit fund.
But it wasn't as healthy all the time.
No, I'm not saying, I'm talking about the law. The law says that we're not supposed to use taxpayers' money at all to fund anything to do with building permits. It's worth researching, because you probably could go back.
Wait, here it is.
No, you can't.
You can't expend dollars from that fund other than building. But you can, if we want to have a building department, we can contribute from general fund to it.
You, I don't think, you're not, I didn't think you're supposed to use taxpayers' money to support somebody that's building a new house. That was my understanding, so I think it's worth looking at, because you might be able to go back and charge some of that back.
Okay, I, I will...
Because I don't, I don't think you're allowed to, I'm serious, I don't think you're allowed to use taxpayers' dollars to subsidize other than maybe the state, the one...
It's the expenditure size. I know it's...
No, no, I know expenditure, but I don't think, no, the whole reason it's set up is, one is, one is to, is, it was to make sure that you're not spending taxpayers' dollars to subsidize developers and builders. You're supposed to make sure one hundred percent of all those things are being covered, but...
I, I will do some research, but I, I had thought, I had thought that you could not charge revenues in excess of what you're paying out in the expenditure. So you couldn't make your service charge exorbitantly high in order to...
You have to cover all of it, but you're not supposed to, I'm pretty confident you're not supposed to subsidize.
Hey, I will, I will take a look into that for you.
Just common sense tells you that Joe Blow shouldn't have to pay for Lombardo building his houses out there.
Well, but, I mean, but it's, a single-family home comes in, and they need to be inspected. We have to perform that duty.
And that permits, that's all supposed to cover that, but, so let's just research it, see what rain is on, so that's the way I was always trained.
Okay.
But anyway, yeah. I was trained by David. I was trained by David.
Okay, we're going to go into the law enforcement fund? Our revenues, we do have a millage on this fund. Millage that we have for 2018, which is 2017's taxable values, is five-point, um, eight-nine-five-two. Yours would be twenty-three, I believe. Twenty, twenty-three.
Giovanna, on the other pa, on the, on this one, can you tell me what, because we skipped through.
Oh, yes. Let me get right there for you.
Maybe we're on thirty? Nope.
Nope, thirty-eight. Page thirty-eight on your line-by-line. We do have some pretty extensive narratives in this, in this law enforcement fund, so... So seeing, seeing the revenues, you can see that we, it's basically funded by our millage. Does anybody have any questions on the revenue portion of this?
Like, when you have the grand stuff, are you going to go back and fix that?
What are you, what's your question?
You say we have things highlighted, the changes, like on page thirty-eight, it says it was projected revenue, but now we know it's really this number, so is the real number in there now?
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I want to know.
Yes.
The draft budget to what we're going over. We just highlighted the changes that occurred. Because five-point-four is what we're expecting in taxable, but it's not after Giovanna goes through and does other calculations to come up to what we budget for.
Right, I explained, I explained that last, last meeting.
So we changed the budget. Page thirty-nine is the biggest change. Can I add two officers?
Oh, I'm not on the expenditures, yeah, demand. Yes, so we are on the expenditures, and that would be on, starting on page forty, in your line-by-line, page forty, it starts the expenditures. Um, again, I have them grouped in classification. And your biggest classification are the contractual that we contract out for our sheriff's department, and I'm sure Mike can go into that a little bit more for you. I do know that we would like to, um, bring back two, two officers, and we do have that budgeted in here.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just had a very quick question. I want to make sure I'm understanding it. So basically, the appropriated prior-year balance, which is based, that's back on page thirty-nine?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so that's six-nine-nine-zero-zero-zero. Um, money has been taken out of that fund and put inside of, let me see, um, that's the line item eight-three-one-zero-zero-zero-two. Hired the two additional staff, or no? Am I reading that wrong?
No, that is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was reading that correct. Okay. Thank you. And, Mike, the cost of one deputy position, it's not what the deputies get, but the one deputy position...
For 2018, the police service unit cost is one hundred sixty thousand, six hundred fifty dollars. It's a one-and-a-half percent increase over this year.
I didn't hear you.
For 2018, a police service unit is $160,650. That's an increase of 1.5% over this year. Just briefly, up until 2008, we had 44 essentially police service units, 44 deputies, plus the sergeants and the lieutenant staff that come with that. In 2008, it was reduced from 44 to 38. Then in 2010, it was reduced from 38 to 31 at the absolute worst time of the recession and the loss of revenue to support that. We've since increased it back up to 35 for the last couple of years. And it's now proposed to be increased again to 37. And a police service unit includes a fully equipped and trained sheriff's deputy, the vehicle and fleet costs, the metro dispatch costs, computer technology costs, insurance, legal liability. All those things are included. And the formula is, for every seven and a half deputies, you are entitled to a sergeant. According to the current formula, we're entitled to, I think, 4.6 or 4.7 sergeants. In reality, there are five assigned for patrol work and one additional running the community action team. So we actually get more supervisors than the formula would call for. Likewise, the formula calls for a lieutenant for every 44 PSUs. And we have had the services of a lieutenant just for us, based on 35. So this would bring us a little closer. The PSU formula also entitles us to full use of civilian support staff, the detective bureau services, the community engagement programs, and support services like special weapons and tactics, crisis negotiators, computer forensics, canine narcotics, bomb tracking dog services, et cetera. So that's all part and parcel of the PSU formula package.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just have a question. And it goes back to your PSUs and what you get, the package you like, that's like, so if we're not actually at 44 PSUs, and we still are thankful enough to have a lieutenant that works for us, would we ever be at risk for losing that?
Well, I would certainly hope not. And I've...
I know, I feel like...
I've not had any indication from the sheriff's administration that that would happen. We used to actually share this lieutenant with Superior Township, and a couple of years ago, the assignment was made just for our township, because of the size and complexity of the operation we have here.
Mike, the two that are coming back, will they be assigned to the road, or is it non-road duties?
I did ask Lieutenant Morocco to start thinking about deployment. In the event the Board approved it, and we were able to increase our contract. Also knowing that, just because we increase it, they may or may not be able to immediately provide a fully trained officer January 1st, for example. They may need to hire and train someone, which means there'd be a little bit of a lag time before they hit the streets on solo patrol. I won't speak for him, but I know he's been actively thinking about the best way to deploy two more officers to get the biggest bang for our buck in terms of our actual needs for investigative services, traffic, and so forth. So I'd be more than happy to have you ask him. I don't know if he's still here or not, but that's up to you, if you want to hear from him on that or not. It may be premature.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to make sure.
I got a whole last...
Yeah, I just want to make sure that they're...
He was asking for 20, but...
Yeah, I wanted 20.
I would vote for 20.
The idea is to, is to put them directly on the street. I'd like to see maybe an increase in our minimum staffing on our, basically going from noon until 4:00 in the morning, you know, which is our, you know, our busiest time.
I just want to make sure they were going to be on the road where they're probably needed the most and to help the most.
Absolutely.
Reduce some of the overtime that these guys have to work. I get it, believe me, I get it. And if we could find more, Mike, I'll go for it every time.
Thank you.
You know I would, too.
I know you would.
I also wanted to point out, in addition to the straight PSU formula cost, we also pay for overtime. And we are budgeting a reduction in overtime expenses for last year, based on current year patterns and so forth. But I also wanted to point out that, over the past couple of years, in my opinion, they've done a better job of managing the overtime and separating out what's billable to us, according to the terms of our contract, and what's not billable to us. For example, just yesterday, I received the invoice for overtime for the month of September 2017, and we were billed $45,135. I also get the Excel spreadsheet that shows all the actual overtime expenditures to support Ypsilanti Township's police operation. The total spending was $97,240, and we got billed for 46% of that. The rest was considered non-billable and to be paid for elsewhere within the sheriff's budget, not billed to us. And that's been a consistent pattern, and I do get that detail, and I do look at it and study it. And it's in much more detail, and I think much better managed than it was in previous years, which helps to account for the reduction in our overtime expenses.
Question. Yes. With the two additional staff, would that even reduce the overtime more so if they are approved by the Board?
Probably not.
Probably not, okay.
You can...
Would we reduce the overtime?
Right, we did reduce the overtime spending based on the assumption that we would add two more.
Okay, got you.
It's already been reduced in alignment with, with the PSU request that would be coming to you.
All right, that answers my question. Thank you.
So we have about, maybe, seven minutes to recap what we did do to help accommodate the two additional officers was. We reduced the overtime by $50,000, and we reduced the payment back on the improvements to the law enforcement center. Last year was like $180,000, and we're going to get paid back $50,000 this year. So those were ways to help with the fund balance, to make sure that the fund balance is at 15%.
And just for your information, I did budget to continue the summer youth program next year, which I know is always a question.
And to restore the neighborhood watch position to either one full-time or two part-time positions?
Yes, and that's within the ordinance.
That's budgeted this year. Yeah, that's in the ordinance budget. So the law enforcement is broken down into two, two departments. One's for the sheriff's contractual, and then the other one is for ordinance. So we'll...
Mike, will those be sheriff's employees or our employees?
The intent was that they would be our employees.
Because it used to be when the previous...
Mamie Johnson was the last full-time employee. She retired in 2011.
So it'd be that kind of a position?
Yes. If we could find someone to do it full-time. If not, we thought maybe two part-time.
So they'd be our employees?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, I would definitely concur. Hopefully, if that comes before the Board, in order to restore the community, I guess you say, engagement specialists for the township, back into a full-time position. Community engagement specialists, yeah, I think that would be great if that could be done. I know it used to be that way, and I know...
Yeah, and in 2008, we changed it because Mamie retired, eight or nine?
2011.
Was it 11?
Yeah.
And, and we just didn't have the money, so we did it. So it increases your budget tremendously by...
Well, I just want to say, I mean, we moved that way, and I know it's probably, we're never going to fill the shoes of Tammy and Brenda. But I really do, I think, people don't realize, you know, they talk about politicians and stuff, and government employees, but I think Brenda and Tammy, I know it's been a real personal sacrifice on your families and your quality of life. You know, you work full-time jobs and then some, and then to add, you know, to do this, and to do it, because that's, we couldn't afford it, because we really was, you know, do that, you know, ask other employees to take on more work, and give them, you know, that money that you get doesn't cover, to me, the amount of... So I just want to say, if we move to that, that, to have done that, I can't even believe that it's been that many years, and that years... And you do it with a smile, you know, but the downside is, is I know, well, at least you fake it. But the downside is the residents, they're going to be upset about, because they love both of you being their neighborhood watch coordinators, because I don't know, all the Board knows, but they have split that path, you know, for several, many, many years now.
Yeah, and I, and I, we need to talk about it more, but I think that two is better than having just one, because it will, it's a wearout.
Well, but, yeah, and it's, on anybody's life, that's going to be really...
It's easier to cover when you have two, and the deputy is the same thing as we could have.
Unless you can have a day off, and the other person can cover it, you know.
Right, it helps. It just, I know, so, but we'll talk about, and I do love doing it. And Tammy might not miss it, but I definitely, I will miss it.
Don't pour water in my mouth.
All right.
Madam Chair? We don't have time to get through the rest of this, so are we going to discuss it at next work session? Because if not, I really want to talk about the nuisance abatement part.
About the what?
Nuisance abatement section, since Mike's already here. But I don't know if we have time to...
Well, we have three minutes.
So no, we don't have time.
Yeah, we don't have time. And that's, and we're on the agenda, it's to cancel, you know, because of the election. So we were talking about maybe having a special working session just to discuss this. Just so we can go over it, and, you know, and I hope, as new trustees, the line item, explaining every line item helps. And any questions that you have, you know, we're always available for you. But this cancellation kind of messed the timing up of the budget. So we have to, by the end of the year, we have to adopt it. We have to have a public hearing. So if you're not opposed to having some sort of special meeting or working session to go over it and take our time, and, okay. All right, so is it all right with you guys if we adjourn?
That would be, yeah, that would be great.
Thank you.
And then we'll complete it?
Yes, then.
And Giovanna's always available, and so is my...
Yes, any questions, if you, if you even think of questions throughout before we have a meeting, please, please email me, call me.
The hydro is really simple. Did you look at the hydro budget? That's a very simple budget, yeah. Capital improvement was the only...
I'm spread all out, getting other people's...
All right, we're going to adjourn until the Board meeting at 7:00. And the time is 6:48.
Everything's here. In your packet. Everything else. Did you want it separate? I can go run it. Hey, Lisa? Oh, here, 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 never mind, I, never mind, I forgot, I got it right here. Oh, thank you.